Apparently lots of people ask that for some reason. So what? And it says, say whatever you like in your five minutes. Apparently, I don't know how they're doing this, but they, it might be live. We are going live now. Okay, so best smiles, be nice, no hitting below the belt. Carla, what have you got? You've got like a fuzzy monster on, on your side there.
Uh huh. This one.
Well, what's that?
It's a triffid.
A triffid? It's a plant.
It just will not stop growing.
Amazing. Great. Well, I don't know if they're going to tell us when we are live. Oh. And when I begin to ask questions, but I'll welcome you and thank you for coming and then we'll, we'll start. Meeting is now streaming live on Facebook. So I guess where on are we? Ashen, sorry, County Goings, Hastings. Oh, don't start until seven forty-five. Okay, so that's four minutes. Yeah, just look, just look beautiful. I love that sheep. Recording. Carla, you'll go first for the five minute intro. I think I'm not very good at alphabets. Is that alphabetical?
I think it's Nigel first.
Is Nigel?
Well, no, actually, it's Peter, Nigel and then me, alphabetically.
But first, first names alphabetical.
You could get a random name generator on the internet to do that.
That's impressive.
Might be difficult in the next two minutes, though, Peter.
Don't know if Claire's listening. That might be an idea for Claire.
So what, what do you want to do? First names or surnames? I was going Carla, Nigel and Peter. But are people happy with that?
That's fine, I'll go.
Yeah, it's all the same, isn't it? Oh, no, last name, stick to last name alphabetical. So Peter, you're first, then Nigel and then Carla. I've just had the V A R has just overruled me. I forgot they can, they can hear, can't they, what we're talking about? Got any good jokes?
I never remember them.
My battery lost.
Right, I think we've got a minute to go.
Okay, I'm gonna do a little dance for, for, for people. Pete, that was, that was a dad dance, that's how.
Oh yes, I know that all too well.
You know that one, do you? Oh, one minute ago. You are live, we are live.
I've got forty-five on my clock.
Forty-five on your clock. Oh yeah, here we go. Welcome to the Hastings, yes. Wow, we're so proud to have our candidates here. We've got Nigel in my top left hand corner there, Pete and Nigel, and we've got a little sheep at the bottom there. So welcome and thank you so much for doing this. I didn't realise politics could be such fun. It's, this is going to be great. What are the format of our, our evening is that each candidate will have five minutes to introduce themselves, say whatever they like, after which we're going to have questions from the public. And then each candidate will have two minutes to answer. I will give a ten second warning. Can you hear that? Good, okay.
Definitely.
And then somebody else, the V A R has the mute button, so you might be muted. Nothing personal, but if that happens, it's out of my hands. Good. Well, let's, let's get started. Here we are. And the order that we're going to do this in, what order did I say? Who's, who's first up? Just a second, I've got it written down. It's Peter, you're up first. Peter, you have got five minutes to say whatever you like.
Okay, well, good gravy. So my name's Peter. I'm the Labour candidate here in Ash. A little bit about me, I'm nineteen, I've lived in Asheville all of my life and I feel quite privileged to live in Asheville. You know, we have brilliant green spaces, we have the canal, we have, well, part of the Rangers. We have, you know, good green spaces around, we have good transport links as well to London. And also, you know, having three railway stations in one council sort of ward is quite rare. But I think there is much that can be approved by electing a Labour councillor. For example, the, I mean, obviously the Ash Rangers has been shut, the accessible part of Ash Rangers has been shut. And Ash Parish Council has been slow to act and our MP has not condemned the Defence Infrastructure Organisation outright. And you may remember a few months ago, we had a meeting about it organised by the Save Ash Rangers Group, who do brilliant work, I must say. I saw the unfortunately, I couldn't be at the protest last weekend, but I saw the report on ITV Meridian and that was brilliant. And so we need a councillor who's going to work hand in hand with the Save Ash Rangers Group, defending Ash Rangers. And you have to remember as well, a lot of people bought their homes because of Ash Rangers and to walk their dogs, et cetera. So that would be my first priority would be standing up for range users, standing up for the people of Ash and Asheville and working hand in hand with the Save Ash Rangers Group against the Defence Infrastructure Organisation. And my second priority would be step free access at Asheville Station. So it is, I know it will be quite a lot of work, I'd imagine, but it is unacceptable that in the twenty-first century, wheelchair users are discriminated against and can't get on the train from Asheville Station. That is completely unacceptable. And my third priority is securing an hourly bus service between Ash, Asheville and Farnborough. And thus, I live in Avondale and thus in northern parts of Asheville, Farnborough is our nearest town. And the bus to Farnborough runs something like three or four times a day, which is unacceptable. It's unusable. We need increased funding, it's a subsidised service, we need increased funding from both, well, from Surrey and working with Hampshire County Council as well. But from Surrey County Council, we need increased funding for a usable hourly bus service in which people going to Farnborough colleges or schools in Farnborough can use, because at the moment it only runs between about ten and two. So it is pretty much useless unless you want to go shopping. So that would be my third priority, securing an all-day forty-one bus service between Ash, Asheville and Farnborough. In terms of Labour's priorities for Surrey, we support on unitary authorities, there's quite a lot of controversy around unitary authorities. The Labour position is that we support multiple unitary authorities across Surrey as part of an overhaul of the two-tier council and borough systems. And in association with enhanced town and parish councils. And Labour supports the, yeah, what else? Oh, Labour supports the, the Labour supports are creating a non-for-profit bus company to improve bus services across Surrey, because currently the privatised bus companies are just taking massive profits out of, out of contracts across Surrey. And, and Labour also supports reversing cuts to our fire service. Six million have been cut in the last five years from our fire service and it is impacting lives, it is costing lives across Surrey. It has to, it has to, well, they'd have to be reversed, whether that's lobbying government for increased funding or whatever. It should be a big priority of the council to reverse those funding cuts from our fire service. Is that five minutes?
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, oh. Yeah, thank, thank you, Peter. That was, that was excellent. That was really goodness. I think we're looking at the, a future Prime Minister in our midst. We're going to have a blue plaque for you.
Goodness me, thank you.
Oh, thank you so much, Peter. And I know you've got exams, haven't you, coming up? So this is beyond the call of duty. Well done. Nigel, are you ready, Nigel?
I'm ready now. I'm having trouble with my, my video, so I'm going to turn my video off.
Okay, however you want to do it.
I can still see you, though.
Ready, steady, go. Off you go.
Thank you, Neil. I've been a resident of Ash, Asheville for over thirty-one years. And I've been a Guildford Borough and Ash Parish councillor now for over twenty years. I have to say, it's been an absolute privilege to represent the parish during this time, although I have to say that sometimes it does feel like you're hitting your head against a brick wall in terms of trying to get things done. I've been chairman of Ash Parish Council for over eighteen years and I have a proven track record of public service. I have a reputation of delivering sound financial management, based on my previous paid job, getting things done and most importantly, supporting our local community. So with this in mind and bearing in mind that with my years in the Borough and Parish Council, it's clear that the big issues that affect our residents are controlled within County Council. And sometimes it is very difficult as a Borough or Parish councillor getting things done. So I took the decision to put my name forward for a candidate for Surrey County Council in order to try and get into that part of the local council trainal basis to try and make sure that I can get the voice of the residents of Ash heard and to get things done within Ash itself. As an experienced councillor with a strong local voice, I believe it's very important to listen to the concerns of residents. And where necessary to work with all other partners and agencies. And you can't get things done on your own. It's, it's a clear fact. And providing, I've always said, providing I can get things done and I'm actually making a difference, I will continue with what I'm doing or trying to do. So I will continue to work hard for all members of Ash and Asheville, making sure the best interests of our community come first. Now, I thought this is going to be quite a, a bashing time for me and, and Peter hasn't disappointed me with his rhetoric on Save Ash Rangers. The fact is that when, as a parish council, we got to hear through the grapevine in December nineteen that the M O D were looking, thinking of shutting the ranges, we wrote to the M O D saying we want an urgent meeting discussed, to discuss what we had heard was happening. It took five months before the M O D contacted us to arrange a meeting. And that was only because the parish council wrote to the local MP and also the Minister, Minister for the Defence Estates to voice our concern and annoyance at what was being proposed and what subsequently happened on the first of April. Now, I've had at least six meetings with the M O D and D I O and a number of telephone conversations. Does suggest that the parish council was slow to act is utter lies and it's incorrect. We've been in there from before the ranges were shut, trying to talk sense to the M O D and the D I O. And a number of letters have been written by me on behalf of the Ash Parish Council and residents to Jeremy Quinn to try and get him to meet with myself and with campaigners to discuss a possible way forward. So I have to take issue with that first point. Now, as far as I'm aware, and Peter may have figures to disprove me, but yes, there have been cuts to the route of the fire service. But I'm not too sure, there's evidence to show that actually that has cost lives, because the last thing I heard was that in fact, the reason why things were being changed was because of fire prevention, because of being less fires.
Sorry, Nigel.
That's okay.
Thanks for my, you can pick that up later, I'm sure there'll be.
No, it's okay, I haven't got a problem.
Okay, sorry, I hope you don't feel bashed. Okay, here we go. Carla, five minutes.
Okay, hi, I'm Carla Morrison and I'm your Liberal Democrat candidate for the county elections on the sixth of May. As you probably know, I live here in Asheville and I live with my partner, Paul, and my mum Sheila. All of my family live, work and go to school locally, so we know this area very well. Just a little bit of background about me, I've had a brilliant career with the M O D. I've had several jobs, even though I've only had one employer, and they've, they've crossed a whole range of areas. I mean, just to give you an example, I've been a Commercial and Finance Manager and I've been responsible for operational management of a fifty-three million pound contract. I've been a senior HR manager and led a geographically spread team of forty-three. And that's supporting six and a half thousand civilian staff. One of my other jobs was as a project manager on a large programme to train just under three and a half thousand people in the use of new technology and more integrated working methods. I took redundancy from the M O D round about eleven years ago. And since that time, I've done voluntary work, firstly as an advisor with Ash Citizens Advice. But more recently, in March last year, I started the Ash Nashville and Ash Green Coronavirus Support Group. In the last year, we've all pulled together and we've become a really joined up community. And what's come to my belief is that a supportive community spirit is absolutely paramount. And that's why I'm sitting here today, because I don't believe that we are getting the best from our council. So I've stood up and said that I would love to become your cancer and represent you. I believe really and truly in local democracy and that decisions are best made by those close to and with those likely, those they most affect. I'm completely committed to the principle of transparency and if you elect me, I'll be open and work hard on your behalf. I'll do everything I can to support our community and that will be done through more consultation and local decision-making. Surrey County Council needs an overhaul, there's no two ways about it. It needs transformation in a progressive and agile way. The Conservatives have had many, many years to, to bring about change and improve our lives. But we still continue to face cuts to our essential services. For example, youth services are being cut and we're now having to deal with increasing antisocial behaviour. That will be my first priority. A return to community policing is what I want. I want to see that. But that alone won't be the answer on its own. It will also require us working with agencies and youth groups to try and help find solutions to the problems that we're facing. On other matters, as far as Surrey County Council is concerned, we need to ensure that there's sufficient funding for basic services. We need enough money that our children, the most vulnerable in our society and those with special educational needs get what they need. But basically, what it comes down to is, it doesn't matter which service it is, it has to be easier to access. Education, adult social care, mental health services, et cetera. Our roads as well, they need proper repairs. How many times have you seen patches done and then somebody else comes back a couple of weeks later? We need it done properly. Surrey County Council has one of the most expensive road, highways contracts in the country. That's not right. We need to do something about it and make sure that we're getting value for our money. Another thing that I'd also like to see is, I'd like to see a crossing on Ashill Road. A number of people have spoken to me about it. Because all the housing is on one side and yet all of the leisure and main shopping facilities are on the other side of the road, yet there's no safe place to cross that road on its busiest times. Other areas of concern that I've got are relating to things like the additional building in our villages that didn't come with infrastructure. So we've now got even more traffic on the roads, which, as I said earlier, aren't in particularly good condition. So I want to do that. I agree with the issues over the Rangers, I'm supporting the Rangers, I'm fully supportive of Asheville Station. And I want to actually provide a fairer, greener, a more caring society. If you want the change, you have to vote for it.
Thank you, Carla. Thank you. Oh, you went over there, Carla. First warning. Okay, very good. I'd like to thank each candidate for a great intro. I'd also like to encourage those people who are watching this at home, if you want to send questions in, please use the, I think, Facebook site or whatever you're watching it on to ask questions and they'll be fed into us. Okay, let's go to our first question. Let's try and get as many in. This is really helpful. I'm so glad Claire did this. This is fascinating. Okay, first question is, each of you will answer beginning with Nigel. The question is, what three things have you done personally over the last twelve months that you are proud of? But has, that has improved the lives of residents of Ash and Asheville? Nigel? Go.
Thank you, Neil. The thing is, as a, as a city council, there are a lot of things that happen during the year and to pick three out is difficult. I think one of the first things was at the beginning of this pandemic. I was contacted by, in fact, Carla and a couple of other people about helping the coronavirus group with certain aspects. One was to enable them to deliver leaf, information leaflets through the doors of people. And I arranged this through the parish council and got these leaflets printed at no, no cost to the coronavirus group. And subsequently, Neil, you'll remember, I contacted you about providing a premises for them at the chapel. Because they had nowhere they could go and you kindly agreed to, to help. So that's everywhere I was able to help with the coronavirus. Because it was a very difficult situation coming up. Something that has been touched on about the extra building in, in Ash, I fully agree with that. But what is coming now is the Ash Road Bridge, which has been pursued for a number of years. Been highly supported by the parish council and at Guildford Borough. It has finally gone, got through. Not only has it got through because of the additional infrastructure that's needed for the new housing, but it would also help to stop the congestion that has been caused through the railway crossing going down for up to thirty minutes. Every hour at peak times, and that's due to go down even more by the end of this year. So that will actually save, can help the carbon footprint reduce, but it would also stop pollution within our village, bearing in mind that city traffic sits actually along four. Only did two things then, Neil. Did, did I hear your bell?
You did.
Oh, that's all right. I'll stop.
Oh, have you done two things? Oh, oh, bless him. Oh, okay, thank you, Nigel. There's so much, I mean, there's so much to say, isn't there, really? Carla, you're next. Do you still remember the question?
Three things I'm most proud of.
Yeah, and have helped people. Okay, Carla? Go.
Okay. Obviously, what I'm most proud of is the fact that in the last year, I formed the Coronavirus Support Group. And we've managed to help so many people over that period of time. I mean, it was for our whole community. It was, it's a service, it still is a service, it's available for anybody to call on. So I'm incredibly proud that I was able to pull that off with the help of so many volunteers. The other thing, or another thing that I'm proud of is helping along with St Mary's, the Food Parcels Project, which is come together with the coronavirus group and allowed us to help those who are struggling through these awful times that we've had. On another note, what I am proud of is the fact that I stood up because we hadn't known about the election, the by-election for the parish council. And that I actually stood up and applied to be co-opted onto the parish council. And that's why I'm now here.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Carla. Peter, if you'd like to unmute yourself, Peter, three things. Okay, ready, steady, go.
Oh, good gravy. This one's going to be hard for me because I was actually locked down at my dad's in Dorset. And from when lockdown came in, it was illegal, technically illegal for me to come back here. So I've spent quite a lot of time down there. In the past year, though, I have got involved with the Save Ash Rangers campaign. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it to the protests. But I did leaflet all of Avondale with a, with a Save Ash Rangers leaflet, which, if anyone's tried it, is no mean feat. And I'm quite experienced at leafleting at Avondale, though. I think I'm probably the only one that can make sure, only one that can do it quickly. So I'm quite proud of that. That was raising awareness of the online meeting we had with Colonel Cook from the Defence Infrastructure Organisation. Would, am I allowed to go for fourteen months away? Am I allowed to go two months out of the year? Okay, I've been involved with the Asheville Cycle Group, which meets at Ash Wolf, well, I did before Covid, meets at Ash Wolf. Suggesting routes and going on their rides and that's a great community initiative. You can meet new people. It keeps you fit and it's great fun. It's a great community initiative. We hope to start, start getting going soon. So yes, so I've been involved with that and I think that's improved the lives of some people in Ash and Asheville. And I also volunteer at weekends at the Finley Lodge Miniature Railway, which is in Finley Lodge Park. And I know quite a few people from Ash and Asheville go there to, you know, because it's great fun. And so it's brilliant seeing people smiling, going around on the trains and, and, and yes. So three, that was three, isn't it? Yeah.
That's three, great. That was, that was wonderful, Peter. Thank you very much. We're, we're going to now move on to our next question, which is kind of related to the last one and Carla will start. There we go. And the question is, David Tucker has asked, what mistakes, ooh, what mistakes have you made in the last twelve months? And how would you, in retrospect, do things differently? Carla? Go.
I've made probably too many mistakes to mention in the last twelve months. But probably I would say that it's connected with the coronavirus support group in that it was set up very, very quickly. So we put procedures in place and I took an awful lot on myself at that point. If I were to do things again, I would make sure that I had a full team. Because as soon as we brought a team on, what we did was we had new ideas. Nobody suffered from those mistakes and that was a good thing because we had the procedures there. But the, the main thing is that we did learn, we put procedures in place and we constantly reviewed them to make sure that they were meeting the requirements. to make sure that they were meeting the requirements at any given time. So that's probably the mistakes that I would, I probably made the most.
Great. Thank you very much, Carla. Now we have Peter, what mistakes have you made, Peter?
Um, I think a big one was being locked down away from Asheville because I know the brilliant community we have here. It, it was probably good to have been, I mean, that, no, it wasn't good to be locked down, but it was out of all the places. I think Asheville would have been a good place to be locked down in. Um uh not attending, I didn't attend the Ash Rangers protest last weekend because I, I had to um go and visit someone. But looking on ITV, the video, and that looked quite good. That looked, um that looked like it was a really worthwhile event attending. So I kind of regret not attending that. Um third one, ooh, I don't really know a third one. I failed one of my uni exams, if that counts. That might be a bit deep, but um yes, that's, that could be the third one.
Thank you very much, Peter. Okay, Nigel, are you there? Nigel? Mistakes, please, Nigel. Oh, go.
Stay. Well, I think two of the one is, as a so a parish council and a volunteer affecting the community for over twenty-one years, I do tend to believe people and they say things and trust people. And so the biggest mistake I've made is in my initial um communication and discussions with MOD and DIO, when they actually gave me reasons as to why they shut the firing plates. Um and at that time, I took what they were saying at their word and tried to find ways um around what they had done in order to help the residents. And it's only subsequent to that, then when it became clear to me that perhaps they weren't necessarily speaking uh with a, with a straight voice, as it were, when different reasons came out. And I feel that by taking that on their trust, um the parish council in particular is probably slow to act right at the beginning. Um in terms of trying to find a way around the problem, rather than really attacking the problem because of having the trust in what, what has been said. Hopefully that has been rectified since then um with more stronger action. But I think it uh it, it's something I I've learnt.
Right. Yeah, well, great. You're all, that was excellent because I keep forgetting to look at the timer. That's good. Uh right, next question. And Peter, just a heads up for you, you're first. Um the question is from Claire. Uh what solutions will you pursue with regard to antisocial behaviour to help our community feel safe? Peter? Oh, go.
Um, I think I think although this is a local election, you have to remember the reasons that antisocial behaviour is increasing is partly because of funding cuts for the police. It's funding cuts, the police budget has been cut and cut and cut. Um and while the ex, while the news of the extra funding is welcome, it only gets police officer levels back to twenty-ten levels. Um so I think, although this is a local election, I think um we need more police officers, frankly, from central government. Um we need more funding from central government. And unfortunately, both the Conservatives and the Lib Dems have really let, well, they've let the whole country down by their austerity over the past ten years. And that has impacted the people of Ash and Asheville. Um, we have a brilliant candidate in Howard Kay for Police and Crime Commissioner. He's a really good guy. I've met him a couple of times. He's, he's brilliant. He's on it. Um he knows yeah, he knows everything you need to know about police and crime commissioner and about um policing in Surrey. He lives over in Farnham. So I think that would be one of the best ways of um of tackling antisocial behaviour is an efficiently run police force and Howard Kay would be the guy to um to uh make the police force more efficient and more effective. Um and also, we've had cuts to local youth services as well. And the, for example, I think a lot of the antisocial behaviour, it actually, it comes from people's upbringing as well. And the cuts to short-start centres has been, has been absolutely awful. Short-start centres have been shut. And um yeah, local youth services have been shut as well. So Labour really wants to support more funding for youth services, more funding for police. And hopefully that will lead to less antisocial behaviour.
Thank you, Peter. Nigel? Nigel, antisocial behaviour, go.
Yes, thank you. What is that question? Yes, antisocial behaviour is a, is something which really affects a lot of people, but it's done by so few, so few people. Um I'm pleased that um we've been working with Joyce Quinn-Eleanor, team of the Surrey Clubs for Young People, um who are actually reopening Ash Youth Centre tomorrow evening from tomorrow. So that's great news. And hopefully some of our young people that perhaps have been on the board uh will be directed and will enjoy that new facility. But in terms of actually taking action, um we had a recent spate of antisocial behaviour down by One Stop uh and the library. Um I've been down there and subsequent to that discussion with the area um area manager for the libraries and with the One Stop manager, it came to light that the um camera down there, for the police camera, hadn't been working. Um and within, within a week, that had been repaired by me contacting the right people. So it comes to not only what you know, but who you know. Because you need to be able to contact people. And the parish council has always had a working relationship, particularly with the local police. Um who we have regular meetings with at the parish centre. Um obviously, not so much with lockdown, that's more by um Zoom meetings and team meetings. We have a number of CCTV cameras, both fixed and mobile. Um and they are moved around by the parish council at the request generally of the police um in order to deal with um certain issues that may arise during, in the community. And those, that those CCTV cameras have in the past identified people causing arson, antisocial behaviour and another, other issues. So it is a, it is a partnership that as a parish council and through county council as well, you need to work in order to try and identify and ensure that the people that are causing the problem are brought to book. You don't need the bell. I just finished, Neil. I'll see it in your eyes. You're gonna pick up that bell, so I'll stop.
I keep forgetting to look at the clock because I'm listening to you guys. I think I, I'm not gonna listen and I'll, I'll go back to the recording and I'll hear it all. But you're doing great. Some very helpful things being said. Okay, let's keep moving. Carla? Carla? Oh, ready, steady, go.
Hi, sorry if you hear some crying in the background. I have children here tonight. Um antisocial behaviour. I'm, I am disappointed in what Nigel has said because this is not a new problem. It's not something that was caused by lockdown. It may have worsened because of lockdown and boredom, but it, but it certainly didn't start. We've had antisocial behaviour in our area for a very long time. And we're now at the stage where something needs doing and doing quickly. I have um as a resident contacted the specialist neighbourhood team. And I've had a few email contacts with them, but I do agree with Nigel on one thing, that you need other agencies involved. So I would work both with the police. Um I would want community policing a lot more visible. Um but I would also talk to the other agencies and youth groups in the area to try and see what we can do to find solutions.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to um move on to our fourth question, which is from Jen. And Nigel, heads up, you're gonna start on this one. Uh this is a great, this is, I don't know how you're gonna get to, do this in two minutes, but it's what do you feel about the growing number of new houses in Ash and the existing schools and doctors' infrastructure being stretched? Okay, Nigel. You're ready. Nigel, go.
And the, the problem actually stems from the fact that apart from Guildford Town Centre, Ash and Tongham are the only urban areas um within Guildford. There's so much greenbelt, eighty-eight percent, I think, of Guildford Borough is greenbelt. Um in terms of the housing, we've always tried to fight um inappropriate development within Ash. Um we have had some successes um with appeals. But until the local plan went through in April two thousand and nineteen, um which the Conservatives in Guildford were slated for, there was no control over where development went. And, and as a consequence to that, um we were trying to put through the local plan for about six years before it actually went through. And because of that, um we were unable to stop development. Um not only within Ash but other areas within the Guildford Borough, but Ash took the biggest hit. And we're seeing the result of that now. I think it's something like fifteen hundred new houses have been approved. And I have to say that parts of Ash are looking like buildings. And I think it's very sad. I love Ash. That's why I put myself up to be a councillor. Um and I, but I'm finding that the number of houses that are going in is very sad. People do need places to live. Uh but I do feel that development is crammed into places it shouldn't be. And, and I think, going back to the previous question, in the long run, it will have a social impact because people live in cheek-by-jowl. Um and that's why it's important to ensure we have places for young people to go, green spaces of people to walk, areas for people to play, the young people to go. Uh I feel it a lot. We're gonna go from seven and a half thousand houses in Ash to over nine thousand. Um and it, it's a big hit. It's a big hit. And it's sad. Ring the bell, I've done it.
Ah, you're good. Timing. Uh, that, oh, Carla, yeah, this is, so housing and infrastructure. Carla, here you go. Ready, go.
Okay, um one of the things I do want to raise is that Nigel just mentioned the, like, the local plan. The local plan was actually rushed through just prior to the two thousand and nineteen elections. It's been up for review. There's been great debate on it. But the local plan was introduced by the last Tory-controlled Borough Council. So why did everything go through like it did? I mean, what actually happened was that in Ash um and Tongham, the building was done in such a way that there was no requirement to provide infrastructure. Everything was done piecemeal. So five hundred houses here, five hundred houses there. If it had been a block of fifteen hundred as one part, then we would not have had, or we would have been given, sorry, infrastructure. Um but because it was all small areas. Of, and that is wrong. And that's something that needs writing. We need the right amount of GP services. We need the right schools for our children locally. Um and we just need to get our act together. But the Tory council did not do that or anybody any good for the years that they were in control.
Sorry, I'm gonna have to come in on that, the local plan.
Ooh, ooh, that's cheating. That's cheating. Nigel, you can't do that. It must be so frustrating, though. I, I quite understand. Uh and I don't know if, if the people who are doing the rules can put a question for you to answer that. Uh there, there should be a way of coming back, but it's not. If, if we open it up, Nigel, it's gonna go all over the place. Uh apologies. Peter?
So, um, right, the first thing is, I support the, I, obviously, I support new developments. If there's affordable housing, there has to be um a, a, well, there has to be a suitable proportion of truly affordable housing. And whether they're doing that with the Ash development is questionable. Um I understand that lots of the Ash development, particularly the development behind Ash Manor, is being built on areas prone to flooding. Now, um I don't know what's being done to mitigate that. Um but if, if um not much has been done, then that obviously is unacceptable. And we can't have people's homes being flooded. Uh the doctor's surgery, which is uh well, particularly the one up by the Ash Wolf, the um doctor's surgery, that is um very busy. I tried to get an appointment there uh a few, few weeks ago and they just I mean, I know there's Covid and everything, but it is constant. They are very busy. They are stretched. And so I would support building a new doctor's surgery um by the new developments in Ash. I know there was speculation it was going to move there or something. I don't know if that's still happening or not. But that is, that would be unsuitable for those living in the northern part of Asheville. So I would support having two doctor's surgeries. One, the current Bartlett Group practice, and then another new one to um for the new developments. And, but yeah, that's me done for now, so I think.
I'm waiting for the next question to come through. Uh but I've just been told from on high, that's uh that, that's clear, I think, that obviously, you know, you will have things that you want to come back at. But if you feel you've been treated unfairly, so we've got two minutes at the end, that we, you'll have two minutes each to, to just um counter whatever you feel like you need to, right? I hope that's okay. How do you? Okay, here it is. And uh Nigel? Right, Nigel, the question is, how, how do you intend to improve communications from Surrey County Council to residents?
Neil, I'm not, Neil, I'm not the next person.
Oh, you're not? Oh, we're on to fifth. Sorry, Carla. Sorry, Carla. I've, I, oh, golly. Here we go. Carla, how would you improve, uh improve communications? Carla, go.
I, I would have to say that there would be much more communication. Um a lot of it would need to be done digitally. Um so a, a, a website, not just Facebook, because even though people are on the internet, they're not on Facebook. But we've also still got to cater for those that are not on the internet at all. Um so I would encourage attendance at council meetings wherever people can get there. Um but I think newsletters and actually getting out and about amongst the residents um is an incredibly good and powerful way of getting the message across. Because if you speak to a couple of people, they will pass that message on. Um so it would be a mix of digital, Facebook, social media um and personal touch, and is, as in getting out and talking to people.
Great. Okay, Peter. Peter, improving communications between the county and residents, local residents, go.
Well, I agree with almost everything Carla's just said. Um in that um we need digital campaigning. Um I think Facebook is quite a good tool to use. Most people are on Facebook. I mean, the Asheville group's got something like seven thousand members or something like that. Um so obviously, you have to be, yeah, I would be visible on Facebook. Um as for people that aren't online, I thought maybe um maybe an increased use of the notice boards that are around. Um I know there's Ash Parish Council notice boards. But um if there was a way of sort of local councillors being able to communicate um doings in Borough and County Council on those notice boards, as well as the parish council, then that would be, I think, very useful because I think people do look at those notice boards despite us being in a sort of digital age. Um and I also agree about uh emailing, some sort of mailing list, perhaps, if, if um if elected, I could um, I could promote, uh perhaps signing up to a, a mailing list where I could um email my local um, my local residents about what is going on in the council. And so I think that would be, I think those three in combination would uh would reach most, if not all, of the population um around Ash and Asheville. So yes, those three, they are my proposals.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Nigel? I think you've, you've, you've heard the question, improving communications between county and local residents. Nigel, are you there, Nigel?
I am. I was just wondering if you're ready, steady.
All right, I, I couldn't see you. That's why. Go.
Thank you. I think, well, I think that's understanding. Thank you. I think, well, I think as I understand it, Surrey County Council are already on Facebook, Twitter and various other, various other media platforms. Parish councils do put stuff on their notice boards which county and Borough councils want publicised. There may be an argument for actually suggesting the county does a, perhaps a once or twice a year newsletter around, around the county, just to give detail to what's been going on. But in terms of attending, attending meetings, you know, the Parish Council has two meetings a month. And I have to say, a number of people, those also standing for election, have not attended any of those Parish Council meetings, apart from a couple on, a couple online. So Parish Council meetings are always there to be attended, to understand how things are going on. It's a pity that people who are now commented on local council activities don't understand some of the stuff that happens or the legislation surrounding it. But as a prospective county councillor, as a candidate, if I got elected, I would actually be undertaking to have regular meetings at the Ash Centre, surgeries with other councillors and if necessary, visiting people in their houses if they're unable to come to the centre. So that's my commitment to the community and able to try and make it more open to people within the community.
Great. Thank you, Nigel. We're going to move on to our next question and we're going to start with you, Peter. Peter, could you?
Is it definitely me again? I seem to have gone first on.
Have you? Oh, well, what question?
Number of occasions.
Question six, I think. Peter, Nigel and Carla. Am I, is that right, Carla? Well, that's what I've got, Peter. Would you mind doing that anyway?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
Okay. Okay, Peter. Wait a minute. We're going to have our things, Peter. Oh, you haven't had the question?
The question.
Yeah, okay. Oh, this multitasking is terrible. Could all candidates give examples of how they have proactively directly supported residents during the COVID pandemic? Okay, ready, steady, go, Peter.
Well, well, I'm not sure if you heard earlier, I was locked down at my dad's in Dorset, so unfortunately I wasn't around the local area for much of the, much of the first lockdown. I have, I've supported people on Facebook, people that, people have said they needed help. I mean, people have asked for even little things like bin bags and stuff on the Avondale Facebook group. We've, we've been more than happy to, to give out bin bags and other things as well for people that have needed help. And, oh, I've put some, I've taken some nice photos of the local area and I've put them on the Asheville Facebook group. So hopefully they might have cheered a couple of people up. Apart from that, unfortunately, I don't really have much else to say.
Well. Well, you are a good. Well, you are a good example. You are modelling good neighbourly things there, Peter. Thank you. Okay. Nigel, I've got you down as next. So here we go. Nigel, go.
Thank you. It's obviously when the pandemic started, I volunteered to help with the Orca Group in Rushmore, who are doing vaccination and testing centres, also volunteer for the Surrey Heartlands, which is the Surrey version. I've had a number of local residents who have contacted me personally and I've dealt with shopping, collected medicines for them and obviously contacted them on a, every other month basis to see if they're okay. Partly, you know, part of it really was to keep the Parish Council offices open as much as possible. We offered the Parish Council staff to do phone calls from the Parish offices because Surrey and Guildford organised the hub from which a lot of the help went out to people in Ash. And I used to do parcels, but they also got the lists from the National Health in terms of the vulnerable people. So Parish Council offered to bring around that list that they had access to on their behalf to see if people were, were actually in need of any help. So what is important is not to duplicate effort because there was, there was a lot of people wanting to help, but it was also making sure that we actually directed the effort so the maximum number of people got help. And that's why, so I offered other organisations as well to try and, to try and help. It was all against the pump as far as I was concerned. So that's what we try and do.
Great. Thank you, Nigel. Carla, your turn. Go.
And so what have we done? The COVID group and leading that with what, just under three hundred volunteers? We've actually done an awful lot to help residents, et cetera. We've done probably in the region of twelve, thirteen hundred prescription collections. We've done shopping for residents that haven't been able to get out and about. We've taken people to medical appointments and for vaccinations at this point, when there's been no transport available for them. We've also got the Food Parcels Project, which we run with St Mary's Church. And we have been providing food parcels since last April to those that need a little bit extra. And that figure varies. So we can, we can give out maybe thirty food parcels a week, which is quite a lot when you take it back to last April. But that's the level of help that people have needed in Ash and Asheville over the last year.
Yeah. Thank you, Carla. Thank you. Okay, Nigel, you're next up and your question is if money was no object, Nigel, what would you like to see happen in Ash and Asheville? Nigel, go.
I would like to see a bypass, to be honest, to stop the traffic coming through the middle of the village because that's the biggest thing. It's a very difficult question to answer really because you can be quite wasteful and frivolous. But I think it's to try and make what the residents of Ash actually want to be provided. So if it's better play facilities, better outside events, you know, if, if money was no object, in some ways, I would say Carrington Rec to level that off, which would cost seven hundred thousand pounds and put a running track and a all-weather track around for residents to go along and to, to exercise all times of the year and to bring what is in fact a recreation ground, which is little used, but to attract people to go in in order to not only for mental but physical health. That would probably be something that would transform, to me, the village of Ashes to make an open space into a far more usable, friendly space for everybody to use.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Nigel. And we thank you, Stacey, for this question. I think it's a great one. Okay, Carla, here we go.
Okay, I would, I would go big. I would want more police in our area. We would want them on the streets. I would want to improve our infrastructure. I would want this to be a much nicer and safer place for us to live. I'd also want to bring in some green initiatives. For example, I'd like charging points in the village. And to be able to help those that are suffering from fuel poverty to improve their homes. So it didn't need to be a choice between either food or fuel.
Great. Thank you very much. And Peter, over to you. Go.
So if money was no object, I would, well, I would subsidise some good bus services so that people can use public transport and make public transport an alternative option. It is, it is much more efficient than car usage. It's much more environmentally friendly. And the bus services in Asheville aren't that brilliant. So I would do that. I would, if, if money was no object and if, if, if I could do anything, I would build a step free access to Asheville Station. I would build that lift or that ramp. It is completely unacceptable that people in wheelchairs are discriminated against in the twenty-first century. I would, I'd build some bike lanes to encourage cycling around our village. I would plant some more trees as well. There's lots of people having trees cut down and being cut down, whether in, in private gardens or in public areas. I've put more trees in public areas because that, that benefits wellbeing, that benefits nature, that benefits us all. And like Carla, I would also want more charging points within our village and to make electric vehicles a more viable option going forward. So yes, those are the things I want if money was no object.
Thank you very much. Right. So we're down to question number eight. And Carla, you're going to kick off here and the question comes from Sheila. What is more important, experience on the council or a fresh approach? Carla, go.
I think a fresh approach has to be good. A level of experience of life is good. Do you have to, should you have to be a councillor and have that council experience? No, I think you can learn that as you go along. As long as you've got the basic skills and a basic grounding in what is going on, then I think you can learn. There will be a whole support network who can take you along. There will be experts. You don't need to be an expert in everything. So I would say the fresh approach is the more important.
Great. Thank you. Peter, you're next. Is it Peter? I've got Carla, Peter and Nigel on this. So Peter.
Well, unsurprisingly, I'm going to say a fresh approach as well. As about the Conservatives have taken Ash and Asheville for granted for way too long. We need a strong progressive alternative within Ash and Asheville and we need change within Ash and Asheville. And I think, I think actually that the Conservatives all over Surrey are getting scared now. Progressive parties are moving in on, in Surrey. They are, they are now challenging the Conservatives. So we really need a fresh approach and a new start to try and improve the lives of everyone within Ash and Asheville. I think, I think a fresh, that fresh approach, I don't think the Lib Dems are as progressive as they make out to be. They supported the Conservative austerity in government and are generally neoliberal when it comes to economics. We need a strong centre-left progressive party and, and Labour is the only left-leaning party standing in this election. So we need a new start within Ash and Asheville, a progressive alternative and therefore I would say a fresh approach would be more important.
Great. Thank you. Nigel, ready, go.
Thank you, Neil. Interesting question. Clearly loaded because I'm the, I'm the safe-toothed tiger here. I have to say, you know, I was new once and I really found it hard because you don't know basically what's, what's going on and it takes a long time to learn. So I would say it, but I think experience is actually important, but you also need fresh ideas from people. And I've never, ever said that I am the arbiter of the only good ideas. If anyone has an idea which is good, then there's no reason why we shouldn't take it forward. It's a question, it's as clear as that. It's actually working with people together to try and get the best. And to me, it's trying to get the best for the community within, within Ash. Now, to be politically, to go political, so I've tried not to be overly political tonight, but clearly I'm being bashed here. I was a councillor before Peter was born. I know what this place was like in nineteen ninety-nine when the Conservatives took back control of the Parish Council from the Lib Dems. It was a tip. Now, it has improved. It can always be better. And I also know the finances that the Parish Council were left in, in nineteen ninety-nine when it got back in. So experience matters, but also new ideas matter. And I, I would never say, I think that it's a question of both, but you cannot be stuck in the mud. You need to know where to go, how to deal with things, how to get things done. Now, so it's simple. I can probably get things done on certain things within weeks, whereas before it would take me six months because of knowledge. But it's, it's, new, new over old, there's going to be a work in between. But that's my particular view. You need to know where you're going and you need new ideas as well. So.
Yeah. I, I'd just like to thank you all. We're not finishing now. I just fancied thanking you really for what you're doing. Okay, so we're going to our ninth question. This is exciting, isn't it? Peter, a heads up, you're first on. What can be done to improve road conditions across Ash? Will any candidate support remove it, removing the ridiculously high new speed bumps running or ruining our cars on Shawfield Road and Vale Road? Okay, somebody's got a low car there. Peter, go.
So as I understand it, the firm Kia has a monopoly on Surrey County Council for road repairs. Labour supports breaking up that monopoly. As for road conditions across Ash and Asheville, as for the Shawfield Road speed humps, I would support potentially modifying them. Obviously, it is completely unacceptable. I know I have friends whose cars have been damaged along there. It's completely unacceptable that vehicles are getting damaged along there. But equally, I do think that speed humps can be useful in regulating traffic flow so we don't have excessive speed. So I would support modifying those speed humps. As for elsewhere in Asheville, in Ash and Asheville, I know the, the roads along down near the Swan are quite potholy, so I would support resurfacing them. And it has to be a quality resurface as well. You can't just, I remember when they did the, when they did the Finley Road up near Mitchett, they just, all it was was having, having resin and throwing a load of stones down. And that's, you know, it might work in the interim, but I think going forward, it, it has to be a quality road repair that, that really, that really can be sustained for, you know, years into the future. Otherwise, it's just, you know, it's like what we see with potholes. It's just patchwork and new potholes open up, et cetera. So that approach doesn't work. We need quality road repairs and we need the firm, the monopoly given by Kia to, to be broken up.
Thank you very much, Peter. Nigel, Nigel, go.
Yes, thank you. Well, regarding to the speed humps generally, the speed cushions were put in at the specific request of the residents in each of those roads, that's Vale Road and Shawfield Road. And this followed a number of years of deaths and injuries caused by speeding. So in terms of cushions, I don't particularly like speed cushions, but they do the job that they're meant to do. They do slow traffic. And since those cushions went in in Shawfield Road, there has been no, what's called personal injury accident since they went in. So they've done the job. Regarding the ones that have just gone in, which are repairs to the existing ones that were breaking up, I believe they've been put in and they're too high. And I've already contacted Surrey Highways and asked them to double check because they're certainly, in my view, higher than the remaining older ones in, in Shawfield Road and Vale Road. There's one in Vale Road that's particularly harsh. The problem with, it's not to do with monopolies. Kia have a contract with the county and part of the contract is to do with patching and it's a different quality of patching that happens. Sometimes it's a quick patch because it's an emergency, sometimes it takes longer. But the real issue is the funding issue. And this is one of the things that people don't understand. If you have ten thousand miles of roads in Scotland through the mountains and you've got ten thousand miles of roads in Surrey, the government fund both areas exactly the same, despite the fact that you might have a man and his dog on that ten thousand miles of road in Scotland and fifty thousand vehicles using the roads in Surrey. The, the roads with the most vehicles obviously break up much more often and therefore there is a disproportionate funding on the form that's used. It works on mileage and not on usage. funding on the form that's used. It works on mileage and not on usage. And that's where the biggest thing is. And one of the things I want to try and do is to actually try and get that imbalance looked at on a national level, to try and make it fair for not just Surrey, but people in the south of England, because we suffer because of the number of people who live here, and our roads get used far more and break up effectively because of that.
Thank you. Carla. Go.
Yeah, okay. Would I think about removing the speed bumps? It's not something that I would rule out. But I, because I think there are lots of traffic calming alternatives that we could look at. A, we could reduce speed limits. B, we could look more to other countries to see what they've actually got. For example, in Europe, quite a lot, they don't have speed cushions, silly name, but that's it. What they have is they have like a chicane area to stop rat running. That's known to stop, to reduce the speed. So there are alternatives that we can look at. But I'd certainly look at, look at the speed cushions that we've currently got, because they are way too high, these new ones that have got, both in Shawfield Road and Vale Road. But I would also look at alternatives, and what other countries are doing, because they have a lot to offer. And if we can utilise that experience, then why are we going to reinvent the wheel?
Thank you, Carla. We're now coming to our last question, which is the last question before your two minutes each of closing statements. And the question's from Katie. And Katie asks, would you support more sustainable transport measures, such as walking, cycling routes, and ways to make it safer for children to walk and cycle rather than use cars? And who's, who's your first? God, number 10, eight, nine. Oh, wait, we've gone right back to the beginning. Nigel, are you ready? Nigel, go. Are you there, Nigel?
Yeah, so I'm breaking up. So it's your end and my end. So I think it's to do with green travel.
Did you get the question?
Not here. You're breaking up quite a lot. Sorry.
Did, did the other guys, did you get that? Or am I breaking up? Okay. Last question is, Katie asks, would you support more sustainable transport measures such as walking, cycling routes, and ways to make it safer for children to walk and cycle rather than use cars? Nigel, off you go.
I think the simple answer to that is yes. And, you know, the thing is, by putting in, we did a long licensed avenue pedestrian crossing after years of campaigning, that's making it safer for children to walk to school and encourage children to walk to school. And by putting in pathways like in the entrance to, from Licensed Avenue through to the Carrington Car Park for children going to Holy Lodge School, it enables them to walk to the entrance at the back of Holy Lodge School without having to go along the road. So anything we can do to make things easier for children to walk safely, but also people to travel around without using petrol, petrol vehicles and diesel is far better. Moving on to electric cars is going to be the way forward. And someone mentioned about electric charging points. We are at the moment looking to try and encourage Surrey County Council to put charging points within Ash. And that will continue whatever happens. But certainly, as a county councillor, I would be able to support and push that view far more easily. But yes, anything that's sustainable, that takes cars off the road and makes it safer for people to get from A to B, has got to be a yes.
Good. Thank you. Carla. Go.
I wouldn't simply support it. I would actively encourage it. I'm all for more active travel. I would encourage walking, cycling, anything that stops us using the cars all of the time. Our roads are not geared up for cyclists. It's as simple as that. 10 metres of cycle lane is neither use nor ornament. We need proper cycle lanes. We need to also instill in our young that actually they're the future. So we need to start teaching them early that they should be doing more walking. We need to make it safer. We need the crossings. We need safe pavements. We need people to actually help and educate everybody that it's not automatic that we get in the cars. But we definitely need more active travel.
Great. Thank you. And Peter, go.
I 100% support more active, more sustainable transport within Ash and Asheville, whether that be walking, cycling, public transport. But unfortunately, the governing party's making it really hard to do that. We've seen welfare increases, while fuel duty's been frozen for something like the fifth year in a row. And welfare increases above and beyond inflation, which is completely unacceptable, particularly as rail usage is falling anyway. And we're very lucky in Ash and Asheville to have three brilliant railway stations, although one not so brilliant, because you can't get to it unless you go upstairs. I would also support, we need much more funding of our bus services. Labour supports, Labour supports setting up a non-for-profit bus company. De-regulation of our bus services in the 90s was supposed to create competition. Instead, it's just created monopolies that rip off, rip off passengers. And we see that with stagecoach rant here. Cycle lanes, I cycle, I don't have a car, I cycle loads of places. I know how difficult it is on the roads. I would 100% support more cycle lanes within Ash, Asheville, and indeed the surrounding areas. And going to school in Holy Lodge and then up at Kings and Cambly, one of the things that, that really struck me was how reliance on the car people, people are when going to school. I would look at perhaps considering setting up walking buses. I'd encourage walking buses. They, they used to be around. I don't think they're around anymore. But they're a really good way of encouraging children to walk to school, walk to school in a safe and coordinated manner, encouraging, taking cars off the road and encouraging them to be healthy as well. And Asheville Electric Charging Points, yes, they have my, my support. Electric vehicles are the future. We need more charging points in Ash and Asheville for more sustainable electric vehicles, so they become the viable alternative to the internal combustion engine.
Good. Silly question. The, well, that's all the direct questions we've had. And I thank everybody that sent those in. They were well thought out, and we got a broad range and some great answers. So thank you very much, everybody. We're now going to have our two minutes. I don't know what order to do this. I could just take the next order, I guess, on the list, which is Carla, Peter, Nigel. Oh, just a minute. Yes, take the next. Yep. Okay, so Carla, you've got, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna watch the clock this time. Two minutes to your closing statement. Go.
Um, okay, so for decades in Ash, we've had only Conservative councillors. I mean, that's all I can actually remember. At every election, we get the same promises. Roads will be sorted out, antisocial behaviour will be addressed, our services will be protected. Here, we've still got the same problems. Why? I think it's because we've just got to the stage where this Conservative County Council has been in power for far too long. We need change. And if that's the case, then the only way that we can achieve that is to get rid of the Conservatives' majority at Surrey County Council. That's what I think will be best for Ash and Asheville. And all I can say is that if you want change, then you know the answer. You have to vote for it.
Thank you very much, Carla. And we're going over to Peter now. Your up to two minutes starts now.
I've lived in Asheville all my life. I know the sense of community we have here. We have brilliant green spaces. We have brilliant transport links. But there are things that need to be improved. The Conservatives have taken Ash and Asheville for granted for way too long. We need change. We need a progressive alternative that will really get things done. The Conservatives want to create a mega unitary authority within Surrey that will, that will limit democracy, that will lessen democracy. And that's just wrong. Having one, one mega unitary authority across Surrey is completely wrong. So yes, we need the Conservatives to lose their majority on the county council. As for why you should vote Labour, well, we have brilliant ideas, like, you know, the bus, the, the breaking up monopoly, breaking up the Kia monopoly on the roads, like a non-for-profit bus company, et cetera. Labour, look, it's, it's true to say Surrey isn't Labour's traditional stronghold. But I think if you give us a chance, we can show you what we're capable of. And lastly, I'd just like to encourage you to vote. Asheville, Ash and Asheville has historically quite low turnout. And we need you to vote. So yeah, if you get that polling card through the door, just go and vote, please, I beg you. And yes, that's, that's me done.
Great. Thank you very much, Peter. Nigel, are you ready? Off you go.
Yes, thank you. I think voting just for change is not necessarily very clever. The last time the Liberal Democrats had control at County Hall, they almost bankrupted the place. That was back in the early 2000s. I do not understand money. I do not understand how to deal with control. To say that we've taken, the Conservatives have taken Ash residents for granted is utterly incorrect. We've always consulted with the residents when things are happening, lighting, anything like that, the cushions, the level, the pedestrian crossing at Licensed Avenue, everything was done with consultation. It has to be done with consultation, because councillors do not know what people want. You don't know what they want until you ask them. That's a basic mantra. Ask the people what they want, and that's what happens. And all I can say is, if I was elected as a Surrey County councillor, I would use my experience to ensure that Ash residents got the best deal possible. And things like policing, yes, whilst not having direct control over the policing pot, we do have direct access to the PCC and to the local police. And we can direct and ask them to direct their resources to the right place to deal with the issues that arise in our particular area and in different areas. Everyone has different priorities. It's ensuring to, it's making sure that you know where the priorities are, and what, who you need to contact to make sure you can get them resolved. And what it's about. It's not change for change's sake, because that's, that's a silly mantra. It's basically who will do the best for you at county. And I believe that person is me. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Nigel. I, I haven't thrown any opinions in, and I've tried really hard not to nod at some of the things that you've been saying. But I would like to say, in support of each one of our candidates, please go out and vote. Peter brought up a very good point, but actually, Ash is nearly bottom, two from bottom of the turnout, 28%. Let's see if we can get that up a bit. And whoever you vote for, get out there and vote, even you, the Lamb, whoever, whatever you're going to vote for. I've really, I've really enjoyed this, and it's been so informative. So again, thank you for coming. Thank you for watching. And let's do it again. I think this is, this is absolutely a no-brainer that we do this every time. And who knows, maybe we should do a, you know, Methodist Anglican and Catholic one, and you can ask questions. That might be fun. Good. Well, there is one last question, which I don't actually understand, but you might. A one-word answer. Who, where is it? Are you on the side of Colin or Cuthbert? Okay, Carla, let's start with you. Are you on the side of Colin or, I don't understand it.
I'll be controversial and say Cuthbert.
Cuthbert. Oh, my goodness. Peter, how about you? Colin or Cuthbert?
Colin. Mox and Spencer's is a British institution. It's brilliant.
Hey, I love you, Peter. Great. Nigel, are you there? Colin or Cuthbert? Oh, he's gone. Oh, you are.
To be honest, I'm too busy to read the papers this week, so I've no idea.
I'm with you, Nigel. I have no idea what it's about.
I would sit on the fence and say either.
Either.
I have to hear their manifesto.
On the, right, really? Okay. Well, guys, I really think we've got three great candidates here. There are only three, aren't there? Yeah. And so thank you for all the work, all the extra hours you're putting in to do this. And we're going to respect you by voting for one of you. But I'm not saying, well, no, I won't say who. Okay, bless you. I won't end in a prayer, but bless you and keep you and shine on you and have a great evening. Bye-bye.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Keep safe out there. All those watching, be safe. And thanks, Neil, for looking after us all.
Okay, bless you.
Yeah, thanks, Claire and all the Asheville community. And thank you, Neil. You're a legend. And thanks to my other, thanks to the other candidates. It's been a good debate, civil debate. And that was good fun. Thank you.
Let's have another election soon.
Let's not.
See you.
Take care. Bye.
Oh, careful. Oh, you're still on. Oh.
I'm afraid to leave.
Oh, Nigel, your, your mic's still on. Whoops. Somebody better turn this off. Oh, okay. See you, guys. I'll see you down Vale Road or at church on Sunday.